I have been trying to answer.
Oh, it's a question?
Yeah, we just. I haven't figured that out yet.
I don't know. And it said, please say something you can hear.
Hello?
Um, I'm trying.
Okay.
So do we try?
Sorry, can we go ahead and mute? Yeah, can we go ahead and mute now?
If you can hear us, I just want to make sure we can't hear him.
We can't.
Yeah, the other girl muted.
Can we, can we mute now?
I'm just checking with her voice. I guess not.
Okay. Okay.
Hi.
How do I sound?
Yeah.
On the side, they will call in after them.
Okay.
I can.
Okay, afternoon everybody. My name is Nick Buckley, acting administrator to Guam EPA, filling in for Administrator Michelle Astenmuster who is on leave. I'll be facility, I'm here as you want. Today is Monday, June twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, and the time now is three oh three beyond tomorrow's standard time. The purpose of today's public hearing is for consideration of interim action level for deodorant in drinking water based on Guam EPA's draft risk-based analysis. The analysis details the clearly defined guidelines and advisories issued by USCPA and other public health authorities which have been used to derive this minimum action level. And according to ten GCA section fifty-three, one-one-three, notice for today's hearing aligning the commencement of a forty-five day public parliament period and the location of the draft risk assessment document was first published in Guam Daily Post, the government of Guam's public notices portal, and the Guam EPA website on January tenth, twenty-twenty-four, and again on January, June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. For the purpose of maintaining our administrative record, today's hearing is being recorded, and questions or comments received Monday, June tenth, twenty-twenty-four through Wednesday, August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four will be officially entered into the administrative record. Any comments may be submitted to the agency via hand delivery or mail and must be addressed to the administrator here at Guam EPA, one-seven dash three-three oh four Marion Avenue, teasing, Nevada, Guam, nine-six-nine-one-three. Any comments may be also emailed to Julie dot Mendoza at EPA dot Guam dot gov with the subject line, "Proposed Deodorant I A L." Comments must include the name, mailing address, and email address of the party commenting. Any comments must be received or postmarked no later than five P M. on August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Ex submissions will not be accepted. The authority to establish interim action levels is granted to Guam EPA pursuant to the Safe Drinking Water Act as repealed and enacted by Guam Public Law thirty-five dash one-one-five and modified as ten GCA chapter fifty-three. Guam EPA upon identifying a contaminant in a public water system that may present an unacceptable health risk to the public may establish interim action levels for contaminants for which maximum contamination levels have not been established by the USCPA. Guam EPA may utilize several drinking water guidelines as well as guidelines issued by other states as a minimum action level as well appropriate. The code of conduct for today's hearing is as follows. Please keep disruption to a minimum and silence all mobile devices. To make the most of our time and ensure efficiency during this hearing, questions for clarification for material covered today will be addressed as soon as the presentations are completed. Questions which are not specifically addressed at this hearing may be responded to when writing at the end of the public parliament period. Again, any comments and agency responses to those comments received through August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four will be made available for public review. If you would like to pose a question, please raise your hand and wait to be called. Uh, you have to be in view of the cameras so we can take a seat at the table and ready to pose your questions that we appreciate. Or please state your name, your title, and your affiliation. Media inquiries will be entertained after the hearing concludes. And finally, please be respectful of each other and this public process. Personal attacks or infractions to character will not be tolerated and will be asked to leave immediately, especially if your remarks are made to be construed as derogatory or threats to the personal safety of everyone here today. Today's presentations will be offered by Dr. Patrick Wilson, senior toxicologist from EPA Region Nine, Ms. Juliana Mendoza, EHS Two with Guam EPA's Safe Drinking Water Program, and Ms. Sierra Betis, EHS One, also with Guam EPA's Safe Drinking Water Program.
Afternoon. Welcome to the public hearing for our proposed interim action level for deodorant. And today we have internal subject matter expert to present on deodorant in Guam's drinking water. I would like to welcome our EPA regional toxicologist, Mr. Patrick Wilson, our EPA environmental health specialist, Ms. Sierra Betis of Safe Drinking Water, and my name is Juliana Mendoza, um, the environmental health specialist two with the Safe Drinking Water Program with Guam EPA. I would like to turn it over to Ms. Sierra Betis. Next slide.
Afternoon, everyone. My name is Sierra Betis. And as we already mentioned, that we use that's fine for our Safe Drinking Water program. So when discussing the background on deodorant, we also want to include the deodorant since it regularly converts to the deodorant under most environmental conditions and body. These pesticides were produced in nineteen forty-eight for deodorant and nineteen fifty for deodorant, and these are semi-volatile, slow to biodepose, and have very low values in stores, so they stay in the environment for a long time. So there are twenty years there. In nineteen seventy, they just began canceled agricultural use of deodorant and mildrin for environmental hazards and potentially carcinogenic effects. In nineteen seventy-two, the USCPA approved deodorant and deodorant for killing termites, but then canceled in nineteen eighty-seven by the manufacturer and also banned by USCPA. So there was about thirty-seven years of use total for these and started twenty-two agricultural, thirteen years for termite use. So all of them deodorant were monitored for from nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-nine from the Safe Drinking Water Act Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Program, and this should vary the contingency occurrence in the states and where it was sponsored. So the USCPA recognizes that deodorant and deodorant may have adverse effects on the health of people but do not set a maximum contaminant level that would be referred to as an MCL. The common frequency and levels of deodorant in the labs were now found causing public health concern and exposure to the chemicals are not nationally widespread. There are some exceptions to this study, but they're limited. Finally, in nineteen ninety-eight, deodorant and deodorant were two of the contaminants considered by USCPA for regular regulatory determination and were not chosen to have an MCL. So the decision for no MCL on these contaminants was also based on the assumption that you could decrease over time since these pesticides will not be used anymore. So I'll hand it over to the EPA Agency National Expert on Toxicology. You have to speak on the health effects of deodorant.
Thanks, Sierra. Good afternoon, afternoon. My name is Patrick Wilson, and I'm a senior regional toxicologist with United States Environmental Protection Agency with Region Nine office in San Francisco, California. This is about my thirtieth year as a toxicologist with the agency and my twenty-fourth year as a senior regional toxicologist. I've had the privilege of working extensively in Guam over the last four years, principally with the best of clean data toxic chemicals that are associated with releases on the island, many of which have been associated with the public of defense activities. Before I begin, I'd like to offer a word of thanks to Guam EPA, Administrator Astenmuster, the deputy administrator Nick, and to both of my colleagues here, Julie and Sierra, for their patience with my ability to travel to Guam. I've had a mother who has not been doing well in terms of fairness and that's delayed my ability to come out to Guam, but I'm happy to be here and happy again to have Julie, uh, Sierra, the administrator and the deputy administrator. Let's start with a conversation about deodorant. When every EPA evaluates the toxicity of a chemical substance, the first thing we want to do is understand the hazards, the health hazards associated with that substance. With respect to deodorant, as you can see on the slide here, deodorant is currently considered a probable human personage by factors and the type of cancer associated with the liver cancer are hepatic or stomach. Unfortunately, deodorant also has a wide range of what we consider to be non-cancer adverse health impacts. So deodorant has the ability to impact our organs and systems outside of cancer and prevent them from working properly. The organ systems are, are the most sensitive to deodorant exposure happen to be again hepatic system of the liver and neurological system. So they're the most sensitive toxicological influence. Next slide, please. Let's put a quick note minute discussing the likelihood of developing cancer associated with different levels of deodorant exposure in drinking water. USCPA has what is called an acceptable carcinogenic risk range. And we give in our analysis of what we call the point of departure or the concentration of a contaminant that is equivalent to in one in one million excess risk of developing cancer. And I, when I use that word risk, it really is a monitor for likelihood. So the concentration of deodorant associated with a one in one million excess likelihood of developing cancer is a very low number, two parts per trillion, a point zero zero two micrograms per liter, which is equivalent to a part per billion. And some think you may wonder why is that concentration so low? Well, it's really a reflection that deodorant is a chlorinated insecticide, and it was in fact designed to eradicate insects, so it should be no surprise to us that is, that it is toxic at extremely low levels of exposure, roughly two parts per trillion. EPA's acceptable carcinogenic risk range begins at a one in one million excess cancer risk level and extends all the way up to a one in ten thousand excess cancer risk level. The concentration associated of deodorant associated with a one in ten thousand excess risk or likelihood of developing cancer is roughly two hundred parts per trillion, as you can see on the slide, which is equivalent to zero point two micrograms of deodorant per liter of drinking water, and that unit of measurement is called a part per billion. We should mention here that the experimental studies that were used to derive these numbers were based largely on animal investigations and laboratory settings. Next slide, please. Let's get just slightly worked with the next one. Let's discuss the non-cancer hazards associated with deodorant. We've already talked to you a little bit about the fact that deodorant is a potent animal contagion for the liver, but it also causes neurotoxicity as identified in studies of primates. In addition to causing liver cancer, deodorant also damages the liver in a way that is not, that does not result in cancer, that results in hepatic lesions. So that is another non-cancer organ-specific toxicity endpoint. EPA has a metric in order for us to evaluate these non-cancer adverse health effects. So let's call the reference dose. The reference dose is the concentration or amount of deodorant that is acceptable or safe over a lifetime of exposure. So we keep the concentrations of deodorant below the reference dose. We're in a position to prevent the neurotoxicity and the liver damage, not the liver damage that results in cancer, but the hepatic lesions. The USCPA reference dose is the metric that he's there, and the concentration in drinking water associated with the, with the reference dose is roughly four hundred parts per trillion. So contrast that concentration with the amount of deodorant associated with cancer. You can see that that concentration is a little bit higher. So therefore, we have to be protective and subject to the cancer endpoint. Let's go back one slide. These concentrations for deodorant do not come from Patrick. It do not comes from Region Nine, but we have as an agency federal health-based guidelines for deodorant, and I wanted to share some of the information or sources of that information with respect to its toxicity. Our federal partners at the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry promenade a series of concentrations called minimal risk levels. We have acute minimal risk levels that we can appeal to, intermediate minimal risk levels that we can appeal to, and of course, I've already referenced EPA's reference dose, which is a chronic or lifetime duration of exposure that the reference dose is designed to be protected by. Finally, we will see that USCPA also has a one-day health advisory for deodorant, and that is based on protection of the most sensitive subgroups to deodorant exposure, and that would be children. The concentration associated with the USCPA one-day health advisory is zero point five parts per trillion of deodorant and not to be one to five hundred parts per trillion of deodorant. So the take-home message from my perspective is we bring in with a fairly toxic chlorinated insecticide that has contaminated drinking water, and the levels that are associated with an unacceptable health risk are relatively low, ranging from roughly two hundred parts, two hundred parts per trillion and, 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 and lower. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague here, Julie, who will speak with some specificity to the proposed interim action.
Afternoon again. My name is Juliana Mendoza. I am the environmental health specialist to the Safe Drinking Water Program with Guam Environmental Protection Agency. So the question is, what are we going to do now? Our, our role here in Guam reviewing is that deodorant is not regulated by USCPA and based on health-based values, Guam will face the present of following health risks. The interim action level for deodorant in drinking water. The interim action level will mandate Tier Two public notification, which means within thirty days to public water systems customers in addition to issuing a do not drink without treatment advisory for areas receiving water that exceed zero point two micrograms per liter or parts per billion. Now for Tier Two, for the Tier Two, the monitoring that it demonstrates that the interim action level exceeds the deodorant interim action level zero point two micrograms per liter or parts per billion in public, again, notification, public notification under the interim action level will be considered a Tier Two publication notice or public notice and must follow the relevant requirements of total guard subsection six point four line point two oh three. And again, the Tier Two public notice rules require the public water system to provide public notice as soon as practical but moderated in three days after the system learns of the violation. In addition, public water system customers who receive or have received water that exceeds non-cancer short-term health advisory of zero point five micrograms per liter or parts per billion shall be specifically notified within twenty-four hours of the average deodorant concentration they have received and that exceeds the short-term health advisory concentration. And again, public water system will have to provide the Tier One notice as soon as practical but moderated in twenty-four hours after the system learns of the violation. So what is this proposed interim action require? So the monitoring requirements, we are setting that um, our own public water system must initially monitor for deodorant at all entry points to the distribution system at no less than quarterly frequency. After the fourth quarters of data has been received, Guam EPA will calculate the winning angle average, and based on that, we will determine if there is a interim or an action level that would require a public notification of either Tier One or Tier Two. Now, if the lab results have no detect or is below the action level, the public water system will request a reduction in monitoring frequency and will be granted by Guam EPA on the basis of the supporting monitoring agenda. So public water system who have already have the fourth quarters with the data, we need to comply immediately after the passing of the interim action level. Next slide.
So this is our map of deodorant in drinking water, and this is just based on current data that we have. So the legend on the left, uh, the green dots are symbols for the proposed interim action level. The two yellow dots, if you can see them, are these are at or above the proposed interim action level, and the red on the top right is above our long cancer short-term health advisory of zero point five. And so the yellow and the red, these will provide a public notification and a do not drink without treatment advisory. And then, of course, this is just our current data. So after initial monitoring, that would come from the proposed interim action level passed. This, this map would expand on all of our public water systems.
And here we have is the resources based on our determination of the interim, the proposed interim action level. You can get information from these resources. And if you need us to email you the resources, please email, um, email Guam EPA on the next slide. So we would like to thank everybody in the hearing and online for joining us. Um, any written comments I do August fourteen, twenty-twenty-four, uh, please contact myself at Julie dot Mendoza at EPA dot Guam dot gov.
And thanks, guys. Uh, so now we can open up a few questions specific to that material. Is that Julie or yourself?
Oh, will the slides be available?
Yes, we think that those are in here.
And will we reject that?
You can find it on our website or the website that I'm already, we did, but they're not there. They'll be on the same, uh, deodorant page that's, that's at moment. I've been engaged. Aligning that draft risk assessment document that is first noticed during June tenth.
Are there any GWA's web data? Do you have samples from other public water systems? The data on where deodorant levels on Guam do also have that?
We, we do, we don't have all the data for all the public water systems, but we do have some data from historical data. And that's why it's important, just so that you guys know it's important that we, um, we, we got to protect public waters. And so with this proposed interim action, we will require all public water system to comply with, with, uh, after work of deodorant.
I'm sorry, but you said that it just didn't make any information.
Well, my name is Angela Luhan and I'm the senior regulatory analyst from Guam Water Works. So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not on your database. Because I know that we have GWA's data, but do you have the data for the other public water systems?
No, not all.
Just us?
For you or like? For one other, yeah, for one other public water system, um, that is for two thousand and seven.
So the only thing is that what would be the regimen or the, uh, protocols for the monitoring? So that will have to be approved first, is that the implementation?
So what's going to happen is that once the, uh, once the proposed interim action level gets approved, uh, the first step is we can reach out to the public water system. Uh, we will look at a monitoring plan. Um, and when we will start, for those systems that just like with Julie, we do have three data, we'll start doing the calculation for the, and for the winning angle average. And then for those systems that, that have not sampled for deodorant, we would click on an initial monitoring, um, quarterly provided that we, um, it's approved, the monitoring plan is approved prior to the sampling.
I think we'll still have need of, of, of that monitoring.
I'd like to also mention that I, I had mentioned that I've been working the last twenty minutes with, with Guam EPA on the cleanup of a nine-day pass or this one site, and I, and as part of Guam EPA's island-wide surveillance and monitoring activities, we have picked up concentrations of deodorant in different regions outside of water. We, we've seen deodorant contaminated sediments, deodorant contaminated fish tissue, deodorant contaminated crab tissue, and these have been in surface weather bodies that you can have at the harbor, along the Bay of Wading Peninsula, and other locations in Guam that we monitor not only for this pesticide, but for other persistent organic contaminants considering PCBs or polyclothing at my finest. So from my perspective, I was not surprised to see deodorant show up in a drinking water well given its ubiquitous nature and historical use throughout the entire South Pacific historically. I think that's important to realize that, uh, deodorant has impacted a broad range of media, not only in Guam, but in the entire South Pacific.
Okay, that's what I'm asking you now. Can, can you explain the process related to how this is going to be approved? Is it only the board approves it or does this have to also go through another legislative approval? Or that's not approved?
It will be set by the board, first thing that, there's a few steps that need to be addressed before it's presented to the board for approval. And part of that is, you know, public commentary is, public hearing and time for the agency to evaluate any, any comments from the community, whether it's one of the, of the water system operators or one of the rate periods. Yeah, we have to take all the listens and account from the administrative record and let the board deliberate on that. So if you're looking at a timeframe.
I'm saying, who are the other parties requiring to approve?
It would, it would, yeah, it would go to our, our.
Does that go through the legislature?
No, based, based on our budgetary authority and the situation we are at, yeah, it can be set by the board.
So what are we thinking like a month or?
Well, the, the public commentary ends, I was, I was thinking that we don't know what we're going to get in terms of public comments. I can tell you that we have none at the moment. Uh, but we still have to go through every comment. But if they are known, then the process will be quicker. And we have to comply with the government law. There's the, you know, action level consideration on the board meeting agenda. And then then go through with the board reading to, at a public reading about considering adopting a law to find an action level.
I like that one.
Sure.
So since you're saying that we've seen it in other things, that people eat meat and fish and, and like eating vegetables, right, or cats, right? Of some, something there like that, it's also a crab tissue. Is WAPA also going to be looking into grossing? So in areas where the fish tissue has shown that, where we're going to advise people not to eat the fish?
We have several consumption, we, we, WAPA, which I have several fish consumption advisories in place of different water bodies, not well, based upon the levels of contaminants that have been measured or identified in different water. That being said, DOD is generally not the most toxic constituent that is responsible for those consumption advisories. The most toxic constituent generally is the polychlorinated by pheno of PCBs. And those, that family of constituents has driven the decision-making with respect to the consumption advisory. But I, but I have an issue to you about DOD is when we see the data for all of the chemical contaminants in that media, it frequently includes DOD. But DOD does not happen to be responsible for the greatest level of health risk. There's a cancer health risk for non-cancer, ask her.
Hi, how can I, I'm Lisa from the National Health Service. I'm a volunteer today with technical table today. And I had some more questions as was given to me. Thank you for those questions, right? I, I, we are aware that DOD can also be inhaler, absorbent steam and of course through crops, through consumption of food products. So, yeah, one of the questions was, other than for order monitoring, the water is a very good way for monitoring for soil or contamination. And, and also, you know, so that's my question. Look, since this, since it came with the public living crops and consumed, um, are we aware, like, which of those hotspots are agricultural areas where that water, contaminated water is in fact being used to produce local food products? And do you have military rather data as well? The data, whether that on a military basis, like being considered in this proposal for establishing these levels of action, these action levels? Um, and there are eighty entry points, DOD entry points with over six months of our three laws or three, uh, three laws or four to five months, but is that not all of the entry points? But they were, were forward, okay. Um, yeah, I guess those, those are early questions. Um, if monitoring can extend past water to include soil, air, and, and other samples, such as actual animal samples, um, and, um, yeah, checking to see if those are agricultural areas. Um, and then, uh, August fourteenth, um, then we're going to have another public meeting. And then we, your board will pass it.
Yeah, so the, the public commentary ends on August fourteenth. Yeah, so that, that needs to take place, uh, to gather comments, review them. And then another, another meeting has to take place for the board to consider adopting the action levels.
Okay, yeah. And we don't see no other energy, but it is, it is, you know, it, it, but I, this is the requirement, right? There's some of the ground for all of the amount of that, because it's, okay. So otherwise, it seems like that stuff's already been, should be, should be prepared away. But, uh, okay, just for, just for ethics, the, the, just for three day that information checks. But, um, yeah, any, any other answers, send us.
Actually, the time being, the primary focus is, um, two minutes, yeah, of the stream of water. And so if anything, uh, any other media that we would consider, uh, like, that could be explored in the future. But, you know, I encourage you to put that down as a comment so that we're able to respond to.
Sure, for sure. We are for sure to confirm if you have a special order for that risk. Okay, um, so most.
I think it was a great question. I, I went off of that. Um, this particular action is pursuant to the Safe Drinking Water Act, a central law that governs the protection of drinking water. It was short, safe.
Yeah.
But your question is broader scope in terms of what other media could be impacted by DOD. You know, we get our arms around that. Because what, what I think about it is, I work on the hazardous waste side with respect to cleaning up contaminated sites in Guam. Whether those sites are, uh, whether, whether the response department for those sites is the Department of Defense or a private entity. Do we conduct those cleanup actions and conduct monitoring for different media? That's where we see the DOD. So those activities have historically gone on and they continue to go on on the Bay of Rye, along Tampa Harbor, the inner border. So we continue to generate data to determine the levels of DOD in different media. But it's in the context of a different regulatory framework, not the same drinking water act that we're using here today. But the other environmental laws of both Guam EPA and federal EPA enforce are super fun law, super law, a resource conservation and recovery activity. So some of the activities that we described are being pursued in those other statutory burdens that with respect to the action today really goes according to the century.
Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure. I would just say, I was like, I need to feel the, the other, the other, yeah, the other things. And I guess the last question was, military lack of data.
So we, the last data that we see during DOD, just like Sarah had, had presented is that DOD is an unregulated contaminant. And these public water systems are not required to sample for DOD. The last data that we received for DOD for the water system, um, specifically one of the DOD system was in two thousand and seven.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, to everybody, I'm very old. Um, as, as a community, our project manager, manager for twenty-two thousand, which is one of the DOD hotspots, and that's, it's a, you know, if there's anything that's available for the public about, and to get those DOD contamination sites. And it's a, um, it's a problem.
Yeah, that's one of the significant challenges with these chlorinated insecticides like DOD. Because of the chlorine content, they're extremely persistent in the terrestrial environment. They're slow to degrade and break down. And we have half lives over decades. So even though the source of the DOD may have been decades ago, we're not surprised to continue to see it in different media, not only in Guam, but in, in the entire South Pacific.
For sure, yeah.
It's a reflection of its persistence.
Right, definitely. And something that Mr. Wilson said, that, uh, the man was that, um, this is, this is actually, um, extremely toxic. And I just think it's, that's such different messaging. When people realize how very little it means to be peeling in the water in order for it to be dangerous, they may understand the real risk. And I think that there's been a lot of, not on the public, on the base of the media, you know, and the public of other agencies, um, you know, this sort of minimizing of the risks, saying, oh, DOD has been showing these water reports, we definitely didn't know all of the study and care about it. I think that's really worth something messaging. And I actually keep, um, Mr. Gudari at the government of authority on the news. And I think that the public needs to hear more of this information. Really how, how, um, how it, it just lasts so long in the environment. And, but also that it's very little, but it's actually highly, highly toxic. And so, um, yeah, I don't know, that's maybe the comment, but maybe that needs to be more clear and clearly emphasized, you know, at all points, whether it's like Guam, weather works or, or PA. Some of the public that pays is that this is a serious issue.
And this, this process is going to address that. I mean, especially with the notification requirements, if the action numbers are, are adopted by the.
Yeah, because, I mean, it seems quite disturbing, um, you know, the person running the water works already says, and it's like, oh, well, DOD has been showing some reports and they haven't cared about it until now.
I think, you know, they do, just that he doesn't care about that.
I don't think he didn't care about, he's, I don't think he's really care about it. You know, in the news, in the here.
I think the public doesn't care about it. I think this is the story now is that I, I don't have any, any, any of the, so, so. We at GWA ensure that we're on top of it. We're the only public water system that even had the data as this process began. So I, I would not like to have us referenced in any public forum, but somehow Mr. Gudari didn't care about this process.
I didn't know that, that's actually what I said ago, that's what I said ago.
Or that the public didn't know, or all of this.
I was, I was in a comment with Mr. Gudari, and that's what I'm saying. It's shocking when regulatory bodies make these general statements that the public, you know, that, whether it's the legislature, and that would actually have CPA that, that called it to the attention of government PA, and then PA would sound to be alarming. So, um, you know, I think as, as a member of the public, kind of trying, you know, follow how the government is responding to this risk and looking at the different kinds of messaging that's not available, the kinds of information that's not available to the public. That's my suggestion, that that's not the kind of messaging that is mainly being forward because at one point, we're getting just a few minutes of, that setting needs a, setting needs a concern. And, um, and it's not true. I agree, I agree with you, it's not true. The public is very concerned. And so, and the head of a, of a water agency says that, that it, it is, it's, it don't feel, it is some feel bad.
Maybe you don't back that up? I, I do, I think, I think there's a third point, I would offer this. The risk, the likelihood of becoming sick from DOD is DOD proportionate to the amount of DOD that you're exposed to.
Right.
So when we're talking about DOD in drinking water, it's a direct pathway of exposure and DOD risk.
Sure.
Some of the other things that we talked about with respect to contaminated media sediments, those do have direct exposure dynamics with the human population. Therefore, the risk of developing DOD-related disease from those, from exposure to that, that media is significantly less.
Okay.
Unlike drinking water, where we ingest it directly, we're going to direct those to DOD. That's not the same dynamic associated with DOD, with sediments. It is very similar to DOD in food products, but the risk will be driven, that's the word of it, the term we use, uh, overall exposure can just that.
But we, we don't see exposure, we have a, that, and there's risk of place that comes to DOD, which is why it makes it so important that that message is clear. And, and I'm so, just looking at cancer, it's so, so it's probably a river failure and it would be cancer, uh, immune failure, kidney, and, yeah, sorry, kidney failure, but the liver is even so, you know. Uh, so I, I wonder how much, you know, for decades, like, of something exposing in the water of the risk, um, if we consume, consume other, um, you know, and everything, such as PFAS and, and, and the, and all the other things in our water that actually still exist, so.
And that's one of the biggest challenges for, for the community of toxicologists in that. It is very difficult for us to draw a relationship between a direct exposure and a direct adverse outcome in an individual. We can make those judgments in populations much more accurately, but in individuals, it's, it's very difficult to do, right? Um, and unfortunately, DOD is not the only constituent that causes our rubbish to misbehave, our nervous systems to misbehave, and certainly not being the constituent that's causing the jet. And how we tease all of that stuff out in our decision-making is very important. But I think you made a great point.
Absolutely, sure. I just, yeah, for a question, I don't, I don't think it's a key thing. It could have occurred in anybody, or jumped over, but that was actually a, 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 a J A and then spent a period of twenty twenty-three in which the banner of authority ensured that Mr. Gudari was, you know, had been at twenty. And so that was just, that was, that was several months ago. So I'm only saying is, that's such a different message. It's a little bit from this, from the message we're getting from there, that DOD is a serious contaminant, that DOD literally is a high risk, a high risk issue. So that's such a different message, I just.
No, I, 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 I take your point, but if we can put up the slide with the drinking water wells, it's a very serious contaminant, the extreme toxin. But the number of wells that seem to be impacted based upon current data is very limited. Uh, we, I DOD would want, uh, with DOD in our environment, or any drinking water well impacted. But in the position that I have to occupy, uh, we have, we have a very limited number of wells where the concentration of DOD approaches an unacceptable health risk. So, um, but we, we have to keep things respectful of it.
Okay, and I would like for you to know that, that theory of that, because we have heard about this for that, um, GWA is already taking the steps necessary to address that. So it's not like we don't care, but it's also, like, gases and stuff. And so, uh, that also is already being undertaken.
Yeah.
I have, I'm sorry, one more question, or two more questions. One is, um, are we, I, would you be testing all the other water, like water, water, or thunders? Would you be testing that as well?
No.
Because water, water regulated, they're drinking water.
Okay. And then the second question was, because you know, all the mitigation and, and treatment for different emerging contaminants, it's quite, takes a lot of time to be able to do it. So is there any other emerging contaminants that USPA and WAPA are looking at? So that if we're going to address this, we need to, and there's other contaminants that you might have to look at. To take care of it now would be the best thing to do.
Well, I, I think the best way to do that is, you know, the, the primary focus today is DOD. Obviously, like, the hands for PFAS. It to, to try to capture everything else to.
Something else?
It'd, it'd be really speculative, but I mean, no, no one can really predict what other contaminants are concerned are going to be highlighted, uh, in our, I mean, we will do our best to, to make sure that the doctor light is as, as soon as we're, we're needed a little bit. And as soon as any type of regulatory action needs to take place to address that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but for now, there's nothing else that we're focused on for the moment aside from DOD for today, and we fasten the, but that's three to five years.
And you're intrigued, you're intrigued too?
Uh, no.
That's good.
That's, yeah, that's the monitor for, for all this, yeah.
Any presence of PCB in, uh, in, in, in terms of emerging contaminants?
Uh, PCBs and drinking waters, it should not be. I mean, we do have an MCL, and that's some, that, 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 that.
Just, just a minute.
In, in, probably for a major by people, they're essentially getting a simple monitor. So it's, it's hard for them to, uh, be dissolved in water.
What about DDT?
Another chlorinated insecticide, the D A, Brazil together.
Right, because it has shown, it has shown surrounding, like, chairs, and, uh, percent, percent, yes, right. I'm just, like, just wondering about the question about the DOD contaminant. There's, there's a, that, I'm, I'm.
So I think that, did you have, did you have a sense of the question?
I, I had, I think, and, of, 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 of. Uh, I, I, I think, uh, of, 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 okay.
So it is basically for the public, is there anything the public can do post getting water back? You know, like, staff orders, revengers, reverse osmosis, uh, let's see, distillation? Any of those, take those down, or do they actually increase concentration?
We know the fact that public filtration is ineffective, we need to, DOD from water.
So I'm, it's big ones. I mean, you know, is that they can't, once you attach the faucet, are those good enough for the unit to get something better?
Well, if we live in a neighborhood, like, DOD and the drinking water, you know, to be bad, now, I, I think that, that type of decision should be made based upon the type of water that's studied into your home, concentrations of DOD associated with it.
Yeah, and now you're just going with DOD here, but there's also any other contaminants?
You know, for, 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 uh, for technical specs like that, it would probably be best that we prefer to, but the manufacturer says that, that device is capable of it, you know, I mean, you're going to have different devices that are going to be rated to do different deals, so, uh, point of use, portability is, is kind of vast, that way, and, so, if, if you are looking for some type of device, that device that could do that, it's best to, you consult directly with the manufacturers, like, legislature, yeah. And there's?
Okay, can the board give some comment?
Go ahead, I, I, all right, so thank you, everybody, this concludes the meeting, the time now is three fifty, we have to go outside, thanks.
Thank you, we have some beginning here about humans. Okay, it is, uh, I'm in touch, I'll receive that.